Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through an audio recording which will be used to ensure an accurate record of proceedings produced in the minutes of the meeting. All comments made in open session will be recorded. PAC TV is providing this service live on Comcast Xfinity Government Access Channel 9. Those without cable, visit YouTube for live streaming. Also, Board Member Jim Noon is participating via remote participation in accordance with the requirements of 940 CMR 29.10 via speakerphone due to geographic distance. All votes during this meeting will be made via roll call. All right, our first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing number SP 1-25 on the application of the town of Pembroke. Care of David Newell, Crocker Design Group, Two Sharp Street, Unit A, Hangam, Mass., requesting site plan approval under the zoning bylaws of the Town of Pembroke, Section V dot seven, Site Plan Approval. The applicant proposes to construct a state-of-the-art public safety facility consisting of both police and fire personnel on the property. Project includes two curb cuts, one on Barker Street and one on Washington Street. The proposed facility will address numerous deficiencies with the current police and fire stations. The proposed development includes the relocation of the existing Turner House to the northwest corner of the property, construction of the Public Safety Building, and an auxiliary building with six garage bays. The property is located at 369 Washington Street, Pembroke, Mass. 02359, in Business District B, Residence District A, and the Historic Overlay District as shown on assessor's map E 12, Lot 1A and 1B. Now, we also have another public hearing that will be running concurrent with this for the building on School Street. But what we'll do first is we'll go through the public hearing and the presentation for the Public Safety Building on Washington Street. Listen closely, hopefully a lot of your questions will be answered in the presentation. We'll also hear from the board's peer review engineer, who may have some questions for the applicant, and then we'll have board questions addressed. At the end of that, we will ask for any kind of public comment. And again, please listen carefully because some of the questions you may have may be answered by the presentation. So who do we have presenting tonight?
Oh, sorry, I'll start. My name is Sean Schmiegel. I'm the project architect for Castle Blues Associates and the project manager for this Public Safety Facility as well as the School Street property. So I'll give a quick introduction of myself, but also here with Crocker Design Group, Gabe Crocker and Dave, no, sorry, Chris. Dave's out of town this evening, so Dave will be doing most of the presentation. But I'll do a high level kind of just update of where we are and how we got here today. So from as far back as 2017, Castle Blues Associates, KDA, we've been working with the Police Department of the Town of Pembroke, working on feasibility studies, appropriate properties to house a new combined public safety facility, both case and fire, as well as a fire substation, which will be presented here this evening. So looking at the, let's just pages here. So as you noted in your brief summary, this is on off of Washington Street, existing property that the town owns. Through multiple rounds of feasibility studies, through the program, the appropriate property size, we've been able to locate the combined public safety facility at this property. Get into much more level of detail when Gabe starts discussing, but I just wanted to at least high level show you the site plan, which, sorry. So, sorry, you have Washington Street along here, Barker Street found along here. As you noted in your summary, we have two curb cuts, one along Washington, one along Barker. This is the main entrance for the public coming in off of Washington Street. The main entrance to the public safety facility is right here. So really, all of this zone is public parking. Again, as you noted in your summary, there's the existing Turner House, which is roughly located in this proximity, and it's being relocated to the northwest corner of the property. Everything in this back portion is all secured parking, specific to the police and fire departments, not only for their patrol, but vehicles that are stored, trailers, and also personal vehicles. At the back is the auxiliary building, as you noted, is the six bay auxiliary building, which is for additional storage, for maintenance for both police and fire vehicles. And then at the, so, I'm sorry, I jumped around here a little bit, but, and this entrance along here is strictly emergency access only. So when the police either exit or return back to the property is along this exit, as well as for the fire department, you know, returning back along through here. And then this is the apparatus bay, it's a four bay apparatus bay in this zone. So there's the opportunity for a drive-through apparatus bays, or, you know, a back-in operation depending on, you know, the types of needs for the vehicles for whichever type of call. So, and then there's some parking along here and here, which would be designated for emergency vehicles as well, personal vehicles for mainly the fire department. I'll get into more of the floor plans in a little bit, but just for, again, from a high level, main entrance for the public along here, parking out in the front at the front entrance, and then the front entrance is right along here. And everything beyond that is all private secured parking, gated parking. And then, again, there's a little bit of parking up here for overflow parking for the public that are visiting the facility, and potentially overflow parking for the Turner House. And I guess I will get into the floor plan a little bit, sorry, Gabe. We'll, I'll be jumping around a little bit here, but I'll just get into the floor plan just so you get a little bit more of the lay of the land. So the main entrance, as I noted, is right along here. On this level is the first floor, which is mostly the patrol for the police department all along in here, locker rooms, office spaces. This is the detention block right here, which is all in the secured zone, the Sallyport Detention Block. Main lobby, dispatch area, records and permitting is all on this main level here. The other side, which is the fire side, so that's the main lobby is right here. As I know are the four bays of apparatus, it's double deep, so exiting out this way, exiting that's in the bottom. And everything on this side is, well, not everything, but everything along here is the, what we're calling the firehouse, but it's the living quarters for the firefighters. Bunks, day room, watchroom, then everything in the central zone is the decontamination area, which currently at the main headquarters, they don't, they have some decontamination, but it's very, 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 very limited. So this is really the main, one of the main purposes of a whole new facility to, for the public, for the safety for the firefighters as well as for the public. So really, everything on this side of this main wall is, I won't call it for the hot zone, but it's mainly specific for the firefighters and making it as safe as possible for the firefighters currently. Jump into the second floor. So the, up here is the fire administration, and then all back here is police department administration. The one public space on this floor is a, it's a community room, but it's also dual-purpose for emergency operating center. It's roughly about 60 seats, so some of that parking on that public zone off of that main entrance is for that reason, not only for public community space, but also for outside departments, either police or fire departments coming in for training exercises or training classes. So there's that necessity for the additional parking out in the public side. So again, up here, this is the, with the exception of meeting with either the fire chief or police chief or some of the administration, this is the only public area upstairs that would be necessary coming through the vestibule. But again, this is all secured and specific to the operations of both police and fire. I will jump back to Gabe, sorry to go through it like that, but...
Go to the aerial mouse right there.
You have the mouse here.
I'm going to grab the person. I'm standing in one place. Good evening, everybody. Thanking Gabe Crocker with Crocker Design Group and the civil engineer for the project. Along with me is that fine gentleman, Chris Caldwell, who's handling the sheets. So just to step back, give you a little update on the existing property, and then we'll move on to the proposed site elements. But property, here's the subject property. As he said, there's two access points today. There's a drive-in to the property here today that's actually off locus, it's just off the property, but there's an access easement for its existence today. We also, there's also an access point, gravel access point over here today as well. The site is just under 10 acres, it's roughly 9.8 acres, about half wetland in the back. This is the, this green line is the wetland boundary here, so this is wetland, and then there's about 4.8 acres of upland in the front. And then also in the back, in the wetland area, there is a flood plain. That flood plain elevation does not make it up into the upland area. The site out on the street, it's roughly along Washington, its elevation's 30 to 33 along here, it's a little bit higher over here, 34. It's mostly flat as you get in through this part of the site, but then right around here there's a break and it dramatically starts to drop down toward the wetland. So you go from, you know, the low 30s all the way down to elevation 16 by the time it hits the wetland line. So there's a dramatic break heading down, and that'll be important when we talk about the site plan because you're going to see the need for retaining walls along the backside in order to make up that grade. Here's the existing Turner House in that location. A budding, we've got commercial, mostly commercial uses on this side. We've got the wetlands here, this is Putting Brook back here. And then on this side, this is the fire station number three across the street. There's an existing single-family residence here, and then we have the residential condominium complex here. The site is zoned in the front, this line here is the zoning boundary. It's Business B in front of that is Residence A behind it, and then this is the historic district overlay boundary. Site's mostly disturbed today, it's been used as a material handling yard, so it's pretty much all disturbed in the area that we're going to be working. Want to go to the, Chris? So Sean hit quite a bit on this plan, so I'll try not to duplicate. As he said, access points, main access proposed off of Washington Street, and additional access off of Route 14. There's 130 parking spaces total proposed on the site. A lot of that is in the secured area here, but if, you know, if the public were, the public-facing entrance and access point would be here, so they'd come in, park in this lot, and the main entry is right here. This drive that you see in the back is the access to the Sallyport, to the secured detention area. The site is dimensionally compliant from a zoning perspective. The use, the government use is allowed in both the Business B District and the Residence A. You'll see the majority of the site and the buildings are all in the Business B component. This small corner back here is in the Residence A District. And you'll start to see here, on the, on, starting right here, heading around the back, this is where we have the retaining wall system. As the grade starts to drop, as you go back, this wall starts to get taller as you come back to the back and turn the corner. We had some room here, so instead of a wall, this is proposed as a slope down, so there's a slope through that area, but staying just outside of the wetlands. We then tried to utilize the back of the auxiliary building as the retaining wall for this section. So, you know, on the front, you'd be, they'd be driving right in and out of the bays, but it's effectively a story exposed on the back to act as the wall instead of doing a separate building foundation and then a wall. Tried to integrate the two Turner House up in the corner. You can see here, we'll go to the next page shortly, but there's a detention basin out front, the septic system's right under the entry point here. We did incorporate a pedestrian connection at the recommendation of the traffic engineer, connecting from the front of the building out between the driveways, out to the sidewalk on the street on 53. Go to the next one, Chris? So grading plan gets pretty busy, but that's because there's a lot of grades. So we have quite a bit of contours as we get around the back. In the front here, this feature you see here is a proposed detention basin in the front. So we've got the building, you know, the street here is 30 to 33, the building's sitting up at 34, so it'll sit three to four feet up prominently from the driveway off of the front, so it'll have a nice setting and a nice presence from that perspective. Everything drains down to the front here to a series of catch basins right at the entry on the parcel. DOT typically doesn't allow, there isn't a formal drainage connection in Washington Street there today, so DOT typically doesn't allow new ones. So we're capturing the runoff here, bringing it to this basin, and then bringing it all the way around back through the detention systems and then out toward the wetland in the rear. This is fairly flat in through here, all the way to the entry to the apparatus bay there, and then this starts to drop, drop down as you come around the back. So where this is, the building's sitting at 34, and you've got grades out here, 30 to 33, this back drive is 28 to 29, this building's sitting at 29. So our goal with that was to try and step these back areas down in order to minimize the amount of wall and grading that was needed back here because of that abrupt and large drop off the back. We tried to step it to try and minimize the amount of the walls, but you still can't, still can't eliminate them entirely. Obviously, it's a new site development, so completely new stormwater management system, catch basins, deep-sump hooded catch basins, water quality units, underground detention or open detention in the front, underground detention and filtration in the rear with discharges into the back. Go to the next one, Chris? Also, all new utilities. We've got electric and telecom coming overhead across the street, ultimately landing on poles on this side and then going underground from there up into the building. You'll see here transformer, the facility will be on a generator, so those are located in that location. New water main coming in off of Route 14, looping all the way around to here, so we've, the services are here for fire and domestic, we've brought it all the way around in order to have a hydrant near the front of the apparatus bay. This is the area of the septic system, obviously no sewer here. Because of, I'd say that one of the challenges that we face here is the soils, there's fairly high groundwater conditions and tighter soils. This was, this was the primary area that perked for the septic. So, you know, as you go up and down that street, you see the mounded septic. So in this case, if we weren't filling the rest of the site, that would look like a mounded septic, but we're bringing the drive in and filling the grade up over the top of it. So that was one of the main drivers for the elevation of where this is all sitting today. But it'll be on a septic system designed for the facility. And because it's on septic, the auxiliary bay and the apparatus bay is, they get tied into onsite oil-water separator systems. I think it's, the facility's all electric?
All electric.
All electric, so we don't have a gas service shown. So fairly straightforward from that perspective, all new to support the proposed development. With that, I can take questions, or do you want to talk about the other sheets?
We can move into the landscaping.
Okay.
So landscaping is in-house through Castle Blues Associates. I'm not a landscape architect, but really just wanted to highlight that along the southern portion of the property, we have vegetation for screening, we'll have a fence in addition to that, like as Gabe just noted, we have the retaining wall right along here. So the greening, I'm sorry, vegetation, shrubs, trees, fencing, and then once we get to the retaining wall, we'll be looking to put some sort of screening on top of the retaining wall, whether it's fencing or some more vegetation. Pretty much all along the back, as Gabe noted, it's a steep slope, so there's just limited vegetation in the back, and then along up along here is all trees and shrubs, again, along the buffers. Along Washington and Barker, just limited-sized trees, just to kind of update the streetscape a little bit along here, and then at the main entrance, you know, lower plantings and grasses and trees and shrubs as well. So in adding to that, I can talk about the exterior of the building slightly. So by being in the historic district, we went through the approval process probably about six, seven months ago. Materials are pretty simplified, but everything fire department-related on the face is a brick face. Then it's flanked by a little bit more historic clapboard siding, panelized base, architectural-styled windows with historic trimming, having a board and batten at the gable ends to help mimic some of the historic character in this area. Small entry canopy, again, pretty simplified, but keeping it pretty traditional to the area. So clapboard siding, asphalt shingles, and then only brick materials at the apparatus bays, both north and south elevations. This elevation is along the Sallyport, so here's the Sallyport, this is what would be facing to the rear of the property. So all clapboards, panelized base, asphalt shingle top. And then looking at the, so this is the southern elevation, which faces the residential neighbors, so brick elevations with the four apparatus bay doors here, and again, clapboard siding, board and batten. So per building code, the building has to be solar, what's called solar-ready. So structurally, the roof is prepared for a future installation at some certain time for solar. So it's currently not part of the project. Typically, you know, when we work with municipalities, there's some sort of power purchasing agreement that is either in the works or in the future, you know, but to be perfectly honest, you know, it's not that cost-effective to purchase it at the time when the construction's complete, just, you know, unless it was budgeted. But at the time of budgeting this project, that wasn't included.
Yes, maybe a gas one would be good.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So it's, again, solar-ready, there's conduits, there's raceways, you know, the power, the panels, the transformer, the generators, all sized for a future installation. But currently, that's not, that's not part of this project. So just to finish along here, again, pretty simplified, but panelized base, clapboard siding, asphalt shingles, and then similarly on this side as well. And then, so this, there's a little bit of a dated image, but, you know, this just kind of gives you an idea of some of the materials. This would be an image probably standing close to the gas station, looking towards the training tower. There's a training tower on site, which I didn't, I failed to mention. Here's the main entrance, the four apparatus bay doors, and then this is the living quarters for the firefighters. So with that, obviously, we're here to answer any questions from the group.
All right. Deb, did you want to go over some things?
More than that, you do?
Yep. Regarding the plan, any outstanding items or questions?
Good evening. Deb Keller with Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors. So we completed a peer review of the plan set that we just went over, and I can highlight, I think signage at the entrances, what, and I know they do have to go through mass DOT for their permitting for both entryways that are being shown, but looking to see if we can supplement some of the signage that's shown on this plan, just to ensure that we know where that public entryway is versus emergency-only, et cetera. I did ask for, and I do think it's more from a client base, as in the town, the police department, fire department, looking for their needs just so that we can coincide the parking and just say, justify the parking that's on the plan. I think a lot of the comments were more for sort of plan cleanup, a little bit of clarification on, or asked for a little bit more information on the pretreatment that's going to be provided for the subsurface chamber systems for the recharge. They indicated they're doing infiltrator, I can't remember, now I'm forgetting, isolator rows, but no calculations on, you know, making sure that they have enough isolator row to provide that treatment. I did comment on, at the time that I did review the plan set, there was no landscaping plans, but those were submitted, so thank you. Let's see, let's flip through, I think that's, that was...
Was there a reference to a traffic study done?
There was a traffic study done for this site, but it was dated 2022.
Okay.
So I would suspect that they're going to be getting into that through mass DOT, so again, I looked at what the recommendations were and just asked to make sure that we coincided the plans with the recommendations that were within that traffic study. Likely, they may need to amend that slightly when they do go to mass DOT, just to update the numbers in that study.
Gotcha.
And that's where I am right now. I know Dave's out, so the updates to many of my comments are forthcoming.
Great. Does the board have anything else?
I just have like one little question. The building's generator-ready, what is the generator going to run off of if there's no gas line?
It's diesel. So the diesel generator will be provided at the project, and it's, the full building will be fully... will be fully on generator if needed for, for three days, 72 hours.
Thank you.
Well, 72 hours.
Is there a gas line?
Yeah, so, so as, as was noted, related to the traffic, so we're currently working with another engineer that's working with mass DOT for the signaling. And so we don't have that planned in here for this evening, but there is going to be a recoordination of the traffic light that's already there, along with some additional striping for do not block, oops, out front along, along this entrance, as well as the lower entrance below. And this will be tied for preemption to the fire department. So when the call comes in for either police or fire, and the fire will come in, they will be able to preempt this intersection, clear out either direction depending on what the call is. So all traffic will be either stopped at this light or brought through depending on, you know, that, that, that level of service. But again, that, we're in the middle, we just, not, it's not the, this engineer, but submitting the first round of documents to mass DOT for their comments. It's quite a lengthy process for permitting, but you know, by the time this project is, is started construction, that permitting will be, will have begun or almost complete. So again, tying it to existing infrastructure as well as adding some striping, and then some, there will be some somewhat of blinking lights as well out front, but you know, how that gets tied to it is still in the process of DOT.
And then also to, to tag team on that, as Deb mentioned, that, that will get permitted through DOT. In addition to that, obviously, we're here before you folks. Next week, we're also in front of the Conservation Commission. So we filed the notice of intent for this one on that. So we'll have that, that hearing next week. And then we're in the process of, we've received Deb's comments, so we're in the process of addressing those. So our, our, our goal was to get the feedback tonight, we'll get the feedback from the Conservation Commission, we'll address her comments, and then we'll come back with a comprehensive update that addresses the totality of the comments.
That sounds good. All right.
I have one question, I'm sorry.
No good.
Are there any EV charging stations?
There are, yes. Are they on this plane?
I mean, if I have to put them in people's houses.
So there are.
There's a bunch of them.
Bunch here, there should be some in the public area. I think this plan might be slightly dated. There are, yeah, so per building code today, you know, with, with new energy code, it's required.
I think we were looking at, weren't we, Sean?
I think, yeah, so I think we're providing four to five on the private side and another four to five.
For employees.
Yeah, for employees and, and future vehicles, which I don't think, you might soon, maybe.
Continue.
I don't think anybody wants to.
But yes, so, so for private vehicles, personal use as well as public use in the public parking area. But it is requirement per, per code. To provide the infrastructure.
Well, the charger station, they need the charger, it needs to be provided for any garage area.
Whether it's, whether it's provided for the project or provided by the town, but yes, it needs to be provided.
Okay, great. Any public comment? And again, we're going to go through this process for the, for the School Street facility as well, and public comment will be available for that as well at that time. But we want you to stick to this particular project here if you can, please.
Hi, good evening. I have a question regarding the entrance and exit on the rear of the facility, dropping out onto 14. How does that affect the traffic pattern on 14, and specifically when there are emergency vehicles?
Um, yeah, no Barker Street, no, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the easiest way to respond.
Are you referring to the Barker Street entrance?
Yes.
Okay, so if I, if I understand it correctly, that's only for police use to enter the Sally Port and/or emergency use for the fire apparatus coming back from a call.
There will be some fire apparatus responding from that area as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you recall, the, the apparatus bay, it's double loaded, so vehicles will be exiting to, from the top as well from the bottom. Majority of the, the ladder truck, the engines will be exiting from the top, you know, exiting onto Route of the Washington, onto Washington. The bottom ones are, hey, secondary ambulance.
Secondary ambulance, a forest by truck, and shift command, it's only staff that gave.
So it's, it's limited, limited equipment will be exiting on, onto Route 14?
Correct.
Okay. Otherwise, even for calls that may need access through Route 14, you're going to exit on Washington Street and come around?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So as far as traffic on 14, what type of signage is going to be used to inform people or give people heads up that there are emergency vehicles in use?
Sure. So that's, some of that's tied to the DOT infrastructure that's being installed or permitted. There will be some additional signage part of our project that will, emergency vehicles only, you know, exiting and entering. There also would be striping out here as well, depending on the preemption of the call that comes in. Again, this is still, the, the street work, the DOT permitting and the design is still, it's still catching up to this part of the project. So I don't believe there's going to be a signal at this location, but there's definitely an additional signal up here to, to allow the vehicles, make the work, vehicles aware that the calls, or vehicles are exiting.
Just one other question.
Deb recommended the no lock here.
Right.
Yeah, we have a no lock situation down here as well, the striping in the, in the street.
Is there going to be any additional consideration given to speed limits on 14?
Currently, that's not part of any of the recommendations.
It's already a major consideration for people in that area.
Well, then that's something you have to take up with the town.
Well, I just didn't know how this facility might affect that, that's all.
Well, we don't.
It would be helpful to have the police at the intersection, right?
Well, you know, obviously, emergency vehicles are going to use Route 14, but they do now. So.
Yes, but I would expect that there'll be a considerable increase in the volume of traffic, emergency traffic in and out of the facility.
I'm not sure if that, if that's the case. I mean, it depends on where the emergency is.
Right, so from a police standpoint, operations, the patrol are, they're out patrolling, right? So there's really no, with the exception of shift change, personal vehicles coming in, patrol vehicles coming back, and then vice versa, patrol vehicles leaving after the shift change and the personal vehicles. From a fire department standpoint, as we just, just discussed, you know, majority of the call, calls for service will be exiting out onto Washington. Granted, there will be moments and times when vehicles, emergency vehicles will be exiting out for, depending on the call. But as, as it was noted a few minutes ago, you know, they currently, the town already utilizes Barker Street for emergency access. Granted, it's, it's direct here now, but most of it would be coming off of Washington.
Okay. Any other questions?
I got a couple questions. I use the, just to add to what you, just saying, we both live in Barker Square, and our neighbors in between us, single family. Right now, when you come out of Barker Square or these driveways, because of trees here and fencing and so forth, it's a blind corner, so when people come around here, they have a tendency to goose it, there's a 45 mile an hour speed limit right there that just says, come on, we should, we can barely get out, get our noses out. So if you're going to be providing some type of advisor or information to DOT, or they set things in stone, we would appreciate any information you could have to mitigate that speed, at least to this point, at least until it gets past us, just so we can get our noses out, get out of there. But I think in this case here, any fire apparatus or police exiting will also have a hard time just because people are just so used to flying through there. So I don't know if you had like a blinking light, red light that lets people, that would be triggered by the car exiting, police car exiting, or a yellow light flashing that would slow them down to help them get out at least, something to consider. But it's, it's a big deal. I'm surprised, you know, there hasn't been any accidents, but it's a challenge to get out of there. And so that was one thing I just wanted to add to these comments. The other question is, this retaining wall here, or fence here, and retaining wall down there, any information on how high the dischubbery would be of the trees or the fence?
We can get that for you, you know, so the types of, the type of plantings that are there. I mean, typically, it's usually five to six feet, you know, once it's matured. Not specifically knowing that portion of what's being planted there, but you know, typically, like I said, it's, it's almost the height of the fence. And then, as I noted, we would, we would replace or add the fence that is currently on, on the town's property, and then at the retaining wall still. So it would, it would be similar, if not better than what's currently there, from, from a buffering or screening from the property.
And is there built into these plans anywhere, any type of mitigation of, you know, with all the disruption that goes on, we're a little concerned with like a mass migration of vermin away, you know, with the disruption. Is there anything that can be proactively done to mitigate that? It's not in the playhouse.
Yeah, I mean, architecturally, there's nothing other than fencing and screening and walls, but there's, there's no, there's no, in addition to for vermin control, other than during construction.
That's what goes to be during construction, once the walls are, it's already habit.
Yeah, yes, sorry. So during, during construction, the, the general contractor is responsible for any and all control of, of animals coming to and from the property. You know, so, so once the construction fence is up, they own that property, and they, every month, they have, have somebody to, you know, whether they need to do any trapping, whatever it is, that, that, it's their responsibility.
So if we have an issue, we come to the town and tell them if we have an issue, are we those the contractor or let them know?
So if there is any situation that is such like that, you know, there, we have the architectural team, there, there is an owner's project manager that's involved in the project, that male or female will be on that property every single day. You know, typically, when there's a butters, such as yourselves, a residential, there's either quarterly newsletters or monthly newsletters that say that there's going to be some sort of substantial type of construction happening in this, this region, whether it's steel or something that just lets you know, like.
Well, the town manager's office is going to be closely monitoring this project, and that, that's the first place I would go.
Okay.
All right, because they'd be communicating with this team on a daily basis, once this project is up and running.
I imagine most of whatever I'm concerned with is going to happen during the grading process and the move on the materials before the construction.
Sure.
Yeah, that'll be early on in the process.
Yeah, I live right next to Bill, I'm right behind this.
All right, you have to take the microphone, please, and tell us who you are.
Yeah, I'm right behind this project, I'm right at five Barker Street. And it became a big problem when they started working on the house. I think they all tended to move over towards less, less, I think the dumpsters behind the convenience store didn't help, and they had no place else to go. It became a big problem probably for, for people that came across the street, they were on the other side of Barker Street. And also, as far as the safety on that corner, I can't even go to my mailbox because they come around that corner at 50, 60 miles an hour. So I'm concerned about that as well. I actually go to my mailbox by getting in my car, driving around to the other side of the street and pulling over in front of my mailbox because they come around that corner too fast. So it is a big concern for safety also. No, just those two big concerns. But the rats were a big problem, and it was when they started working on that house.
I just want to say in general, as neighbors in that area, we're very much for this project. We think it's a great thing, it's going to be a big improvement for the corner. So if you could just relay our concerns with that traffic situation, you getting in and out, we'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, again, I know it's still in design, so we will, we will relay that.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm hearing this talk. Just one more question, maybe I missed something along the way. I know we were talking about putting a Y on the other side of the street, why aren't we talking about putting this there instead?
That's, we're way beyond that.
No, I know.
Yeah.
But I guess, I have my own curiosity.
Yeah.
What would that be?
I don't think we can answer that question for you.
What?
We can't answer that question for you.
Okay, it's just, it's a pretty enormous area, it's too big, it's a big over there anyway.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we, we don't know anything about it. All right, we need to move on. I think both of these will be continued to the seventh, is that correct?
No, the seventh.
Because you got a couple of loose ends to get together, and at that point, we can do the conditions for you, and you would have been in front of Concom as well, so we can probably wrap everything up on the seventh for you. But I do want to start the public hearing portion now for the other building, so let me, let me get that started. All right, next, we're going to hear public hearing number SP 2-25 on the application of the town of Pembroke, care of David Newell Crocker Design Group. Requesting site plan approval under the zoning bylaws of the town of Pembroke, Section V dot seven, site plan approval. The applicant proposes to construct a new fire substation. The project includes two curb cuts, both on School Street. One curb cut is for vehicle and emergency vehicle access. The other is strictly for emergency vehicle access to the garage bays. Property is located at zero Monroe Street, Pembroke, Mass. 02359, in Residence District A, as shown on assessor's map, C4, Lot 26.
Okay, so similarly to, oops, that's not what I wanted to do. So again, I'll go pretty high level, then I'll let Gabe get into everything else. So as it was noted, two curb cuts along School Street, fire substation, it's a three-bay apparatus bay exiting out onto School Street, and then a two-bay exiting off the rear. Similar to the headquarters, these would all be secondary vehicles, overflow vehicles, if you will, and then the first responded vehicles coming off and onto School Street. The secondary, or the main entrance or main driveway into the, into the facility is along here, it's a two-way, two-way road coming into the back, so any returning vehicles would come through and drive through from the, from the rear. We do have public facing entrance here, but there really is no, obviously, in case there's an emergency, really not any public function here, strictly just for the firefighters. There's also a small office for the police department, you know, for writing reports, whatever, throughout, throughout the course of the day. But the main entrance is here, there's a few public parking spots here with the handicap parking spot, sidewalk to the front door, and then all these are just be for the firefighters, private, private parking. No secure parking here, but just designated fire department parking along here. I'll get into the plan before Gabe jumps in. So front entrance, this is the day room, firefighter bunks, electrical, mechanical rooms, there's a small little wellness area, small office for the police department, there's a triage room, again, for anyone that's in, in need of emergency coming from, from the public. Then everything in this zone is that decontamination area, and then the fire apparatus bays all along here. So pretty small, but where it's, where it's positioned, where it's located in the town, you know, through traffic studies or response time analysis, this is the perfect location for a substation, so that's why we're at this location. I'll go back to Gabe. Try to get off of this, sorry.
Go back one more. All right, here's the existing property, located at the intersection of School Street, Route 27 and Monroe. Site's undeveloped. Site's undeveloped today, it's roughly 2.8 acres, mostly disturbed, land's been worked. There's an existing gravel gated access connection point right here at the intersection. We've got, to the east, we've got existing single-family residential homes. We've got the town conservation area in Hog Bog. Behind the property, there is a, this is the bordering vegetated wetland area that does have a, a bit of a buffer that comes up into the property, but our goal was to stay outside of that. This is a mapped DEP Zone A Surface Water Protection Supply area. It's not a, not a no-build, it's, but there are provisions about no new stormwater discharges heading in this direction, and you'll see that as we get into the plan as to how we're handling that. Go to the next page. So, the site was much easier and quicker to lay out than the other one. Effectively, we have the loop in through the building and, and then out. So, obviously, as he said, main access here, we've got 11 parking spaces on this side for the folks at the facility. One thing that we did do in the back, because if somebody were to, to drive back here, we wanted to make sure that they had the ability to turn around, so we pushed the dumpsters out and made this an area for folks to be able to do a three-point turn, if they, if they go past those parking spaces and realize that they, they don't necessarily want to go, go through the bays. So, pretty straightforward, main access point here. You'll see on the, actually, might as well go to the next page. From a grading perspective, pretty minimal in terms of the grading work that has to be done for the main part of the site. This was nice sandy soils with, with deep groundwater, so we were able to take advantage of that. You'll see, while it's a smaller facility, the size of the underground stormwater infiltration systems is also smaller because we have good soils and, and good depth to, to work with. Septic system, it'll be septic here as well, we've got that located over on, on this side of the property. The majority of the contours you see in the back is actually a, it's a hill back here that we're, we're just slightly cutting into and then having to grade. But otherwise, grading around the property is minimal, pretty, pretty straightforward from that perspective. Same thing out front, we can't drain onto the, onto School Street, so we've got a trench drain system here that collects the drive coming out of the apparatus bays to take it around to the system here. Next page. And just like the other, the other one, all new, all new utilities, so we've got a new, we've got a new water service coming in off of School Street, services here, hydrant over here. We've got overhead electric and telecom getting to poles on the property and then going underground. We've got a transformer here, it will be on generator power, so we've got the generator located toward the rear. Also, because it's on septic, we have to do the same tight tank systems for the trench drains throughout. That's a, this one's a fairly straightforward site from, from, from a civil engineering perspective. We do have a peer review letter from Ms. Keller on this one, too. We're also going through her comments to address those with the recent middle as well.
Good. Deb, what do you got?
I'm Keller with Merrill Engineers again. This one, as, as stated, was a little bit easier.
Better soils, so I think most of my comments were similar, just wanting to ensure that we had proper signage on the street, making sure nobody, this one's a little bit easier, nobody pulls into the truck exiting drive and uses the main driveway entrance. Yeah, I, again, I think I was missing the landscaping plan, but has since been provided. There was no traffic study provided on this one, so that might be a consideration possibly for a waiver.
Will there be a waiver request for the traffic study?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And, see, then, one of my other questions was, there's a proposed flagpole in the front yard, and just for clarification, just to double check whether or not that is considered a structure, and making sure that it complies with the setback, it looks like it might be 10 feet forward, so if that's the location we want it, and it is considered a structure, they may be required to look for variance for that.
Hmm.
I don't, I did not go to building to double check on that, so I think I asked the question to make sure that they double checked that.
Well, it's a question for the building inspector.
Yeah, yeah.
And we will look into it, obviously, we prefer not to, we want to cite it so that we don't need a variance.
Right.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. There is, with the existing site- You know, it kind of rises up as you go into the site from School Street, so that'll be, be cut down a little bit, and that, in, in general, the grading is a lot easier, and the landscaping did sort of enhance that right-hand side, which is the residential abutting side, which is about to arrive over there.
Any questions from the board? Okay. You are in Residence A here, so just give us an idea of what you've done to mitigate some, maybe noise or visuals for the butters, just so we get a general idea of what, what efforts have been made for that.
So, with the exception of the back portion of the site, as Gabe noted, is, is we're kind of carving out there, and there's, there's, there's not a burn, but, you know, a little of the hill back here. Vegetation along the, the property boundaries, or at least along the, along the driveways, we've located the noisier of equipment in the back, which is the generator, which would be utilized, you know, once a week for 20 minutes, just for, for maintenance purposes, or of course, if it's necessary. But other than, other than that, and housing vehicles inside the garage and outside of emergency call, that's, that's all that's currently provided or proposed. I didn't, it's similar of architecture on the exterior of the headquarters, so all of the mechanical units, at least the air handlers and everything, is all within the gabled ends, or the gables of the, so there's no exterior equipment, other than condensers. So, that's, that's another element of reduction of noise. But everything else is, like I said, architecturally similar to headquarters.
Right. And any idea of the number of trips, or the, the use, the number of calls that come out of it, will be coming out of this?
It would be significantly less than the Washington station, say realistically, three, four per day.
Okay. Any other que-
Station will come in with fire and any animals in farthest-
Any other questions from the board? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the question I have on both of these projects, pretty selfish, but I want to see us get a proposal for solar and figure out sooner than later, because, you know, fully electric building now, like, as a taxpayer, I want to know how to better invest money, because I don't want taxes to keep going up to pay an electric bill, if we could have bought solar panels. So, I just want that to be addressed sooner than later.
Duly noted. Do we have any comment from the public? Sure.
Hi, my name is Tina, and I live at the school street, which is right next door to this building, right to the right side. So, I have three concerns. First one is the waiver of the traffic study, because School Street is a very busy street. It's also like a minute away from the middle school. We get tons of middle school traffic twice a day, morning and night for nine months. There are children that still walk to school, even though there are not sidewalks there. I see kids riding their bikes to the middle school. Also, there's school buses, you know, and there are no sidewalks, so this is a concern. The traffic is really fast, they go above the speed limit most of the time on School Street, so that's one of my concerns. I think it would be really important to look at the traffic, and especially with both exits coming out on School Street, it could be a problem or dangerous. The other thing, the other concern that I have, one of them is obviously the sound and lights. I work from home, I know a lot of people in my neighborhood work from home. My office actually faces that direction, so three times a day sirens going off would be, definitely be disturbing to myself and other people in the neighborhood. I'm concerned with lights, my bedroom's facing outside, so, you know, lights on the property, flashing lights, things like that, that's a big concern. And the third thing is really the vegetation. I've been in that house for 10 years, and on that side of my house, we have a big problem with the Asian bittersweet. So, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but those are vines that grow up the trees, and they stop the light, the trees, the trees can't grow, and then the trees die. So, we've been really cutting back that for years to try to get those trees to stay. So, I notice there's like grass there. So, more trees and more attention to that would be helpful, I think, with that as well, because that, that area is just, the trees just keep dying. So, those are my three concerns.
Any other questions?
Hi, my name's Ian Fryer, I live at One Melinda Lane, so I'm just two blocks to the right. I have similar concerns to Tina, mainly regarding the lighting and the noise pollution, and what's going to be done to mitigate that beyond some grass and a few trees, because we do have a real problem with that Asian vine. In addition, I was wondering if the dumpster could be moved to the other side of the parking lot, just in that location there, and I work with a lot of commercial property, and regardless of whatever you do, and however careful you are, dumpsters always attract vermin, and they're also extremely loud when they're being emptied, or when people are just using them generally. So, the further we could get those away from the residential houses, the better. Yeah, and then, if there's any way to shield the lights on this side of the building so they're not pointing directly into our windows, it would be greatly appreciated.
Well, we do have, you have a photometric plan for this, right?
Right, yeah, so, so, part of this plan is, it's a nice guy, like the parking lot lights, everything, all the lighting is kept on the property, it doesn't spill over to any of the abutting properties. Not to say you can't look over and see the light, but the lighting's not coming onto your property. So, it's all housed within the property boundaries. And then the elevation that's facing your property is this, so there's really, there's really no windows, I mean, it's, it's, it's just a storage portion of it, so it's pretty limited of, there's no need for any light on that side. But did take note on, on the vegetation on that side of the bittersweet, whatever you said, the Asian bittersweet. I'm sure our landscape architect is aware of that, or he will be. So, but yeah, there's no, there's, other than the emergency lights leaving and coming and going, that's, all the other lighting on the property is, is, stays with it.
So, there won't be more street lights flashing?
Okay, any other questions?
And about the traffic study. The middle school is bright-
Yeah, I know, but-
And when the weather's bad, that street backs up.
Well, taking into consideration three or four trips a day, and the only traffic you're getting is any personnel coming or going. So, it's not a destination location like a store, retail store that generates traffic?
But the ambulance is coming out from the-
Yeah, three or four trips per day.
Most of those would be at night, too, I believe, right? Because the majority of the day calls are on the other side of town, right?
Right. The plan at the end of the day is, you know, hopefully the station will be able to just take care of the folks that are in town, which that call volume is a lot more. But overall, you know, majority of the call will be made out by Washington, three or four, realistic out of here. And we'll have a fire truck that's only, at the time, five years old, it's actually, it's not loud, it's not a big, it's a diesel engine, but it's not like the old Detroit diesels are really loud. The ambulance, their gasoline handles is, they're not diesel handles, it's still not quiet, and fire struck, but also gasoline is not, you know, it's really not-
And at night, do they roll out with the sirens going?
Usually not, and we probably don't now, at the center station.
Okay, one more, one more question, and we got, we have to move on.
Is that two year old calls total for the town, or three year old calls?
Just for Monroe, just for this one. Right.
Hi, Dan Griffin, 443 School Street. Would you mind flip it over to the aerial real quick? Yeah, so, that driveway that you see on the kind of bottom right there is lined? Yeah, so, first question here is, where, where are those, I don't know what's going to be, am I going to be competing with ambulances potentially to get out of my driveway? I think that's right here, right, Gabe?
Yeah, that's your driveway right there.
Okay, all right, so, the other thing, I didn't, here you say you might have said it, but is there going to be some kind of blinking light or anything here? There's no change to that, or any- No changes, there's no recommendations from that here. Okay. All right, I, I think those were my, my two biggest concerns, just, that's a tough spot being right across from there, and the light pollution, I'm, I'm a little concerned about, too. I know you're saying it's contained, but directly across the street from my house, having lights on all night isn't, isn't possible, I'm not going to lie, but that's about it.
All right, so, I'll accept a motion to continue the public hearing on both of these until April 7th, what time, Sue?
Seven o'clock against third on the agenda.
Okay, seven o'clock.
What you just said.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, we have to do a roll call vote, so Scott?
Yep.
Stefan?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Jim? Heather?
Yes.
Head, I'm an eye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, please.
Sure. Okay, we do have another public hearing that we're, we need to start. So, I'll give you, give folks a minute to exit. Who wish to exit? Okay, we can get started. So, the next public hearing is on a proposed zoning bylaw amendment on whether to amend the Town of Pembroke zoning bylaws, Section 410, to, one, regulate adult-use marijuana retail establishments and delivery operators by special permit, and, two, prohibit all other types of licensed adult-use marijuana businesses. Okay, who do we have here?
Hi, Tracy Moreno, Pembroke Select Board.
Okay, you know, you can go to the podium.
I will here.
Yeah, absolutely. And this is a zoning bylaw change, just want to let folks know. This is a zoning bylaw change which has to be recommended by the planning board as to whether it goes to town meeting or not, but it has not been sponsored by the planning board. This bylaw is being sponsored by the select board. So, just to know who's-
Hi, thank you.
Who the interested party is.
Thanks, thanks for having me. So, the select board is supporting and has already voted favorable action on this, this article before you. A little bit of history, the last time that I believe this came before the town was May 2017, and ban was approved by the voters at ballot in at town meeting. We feel that it's important to periodically reassess past decisions, and we decided to place this before the voters again at this upcoming spring meeting- place this before the vote is again at this upcoming spring meeting. I don't know if you have all the pieces of the article in front of you, but there is an A, B, and C of, okay. I know we talked about it a little bit earlier. There is a piece to this article that also votes to approve an excise tax of 3%. I just wanted to make sure that you have that in front of you as well.
I'm kind of surprised that's in the zoning by law. Wouldn't that be in the town by law?
It is mixed, it's, it's broken up into A, B, and C. So A is the zoning piece and then, I have to look at this.
Okay, so A is the medical marijuana overlay district now to be changed to the recreational marijuana overlay district, correct?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
And the planning board would be the special permitting granting authority?
Correct.
Okay. Good, any questions from the board?
Do you have any questions for me?
I know one question is, I, I know this was kind of turnkey because we had already addressed the medical marijuana issue and that was done before the referendum on the recreational. So that's why we did the medical marijuana because that passed
Right.
in a statewide referendum before the recreational did. So we addressed it in the overlay district. And that overlay district is on the Marshfield side of Route 3
Right.
in industrial A.
Is it A and B?
Uh, maybe A and B.
It's A and B?
Yeah.
So the overlay is already present. That's minimal changes.
Right.
So what are the changes here?
Just going from medical to recreational and assessing a 3% excise tax on the sales.
Which you cannot do on medical.
I mean, one of my questions was, and, I mean, you guys have been thinking about this, so I don't want to, I don't want to stir the pot too much, but were, were you thinking about other business zones? And special permitting based on other parameters and other?
This was, but this was something, I guess for me personally, it was something that I just felt was unnecessary. It, it invites extra revenue into the town. I just, I don't see any purpose. It's, it's a win. It's a win across the board for us. I understand some people think that the, the market is already saturated, but I don't think that that justifies a ban. Like I said, medical marijuana, sure, but that doesn't allow us to generate any revenue. So this is such a minimal change. It's already, the overlay is already present. There's really not a lot of change to that. I feel like in the last seven years or so, the atmosphere around the subject matter has changed a lot as well. So it's just time to bring it back to the people.
And we really don't know whether someone would have located there because it was limited to the medical marijuana, which after the referendum on recreational, just, I mean, you know, there really was no reason to put medical marijuana in when you could do the recreational. And we didn't allow that, so we don't know-
Of course.
Someone may have, may have wanted to go into that spot.
Of course.
We, we probably won't know unless this passes, so.
And we have them all around us. There's Halifax and there's Marshfield and there's Kingston. And all of our Pembroke residents are going net-a-shop. Yep.
Any other questions from the board? Do we have anyone here for public comment on this? All right, hearing done.
So we only have the overlay district for it in industrial A or A and B?
A and B, I'm pretty positive.
But we don't allow it in business A and B?
No, we do not.
And we don't, and we don't allow the farming of it in town, do we?
What if somebody came and wanted to farm hemp?
There are provisions in, in the, in the marijuana laws, these laws, that allow for cultivation, correct?
This specifically allows for retail and courier.
Okay.
And that's it.
So no cultivation. At one time, though, we're thinking a lot about the cultivation and, and, and growing it. However, there is state law, in, in the referendum, the state law allows for cultivation for personal use.
Perhaps.
Yeah.
But that's
Yeah.
not the case here.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we're a farming community. I'm just saying, if I was going to support my local farmers, I'd rather them grow a crop.
Yeah, I don't know how the distribution works or how the growing works and how the distribution works.
I can't speak to it.
Yeah. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to forward this article to town meeting floor.
Second, can I touch on?
Okay, sure, Jim.
Just looking at the location, I see as written here, it's west of Route 3. I, maybe my memory's off, but I seem to remember it being east of Route 3, but not sure.
No, it was west. It's the same as the adult, it's the same as the adult overlay district.
Well, I thought the adult overlay district, I was familiar with that, is east of Route 3.
Uh, I'm not sure. I know it's, it's west. It was, the medical marijuana was, was west.
Well, I'm 100% that the adult zone is east of Route 3.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'll trust your memory.
I'm just wondering if we want to change that or just double check on it?
Oh, yeah, we can double check on it before it goes. I mean, town council's already vetted it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
But just something to consider, if the intention was, and I thought the intention was, that it would match the adult zone, that should be east instead of west.
Okay, well, it's a good question we'll bring up.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, support this to send to town meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Scott?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
And I'm an I.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, next we've got, um, actually, we should have closed the public hearing, so I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call. Scott?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we have a site plan modification for SP 4-08. This is for Chris King, owner, and Reggie Newcomb, general contractor for King Collision. Discussion on constructing a canopy structure on that property. Come on up. Yeah, yeah, you can stand at the podium, that just makes it a little easier. Thank you.
So about three weeks ago, I had contacted the young building inspector, Pete Delbreed, about what we were looking to do. He recommended I go see Susan and she in turn contacted Debbie, the town engineer, and they directed us to go this way with, you know, what we're looking to do. Basically looking to put a canopy out front, so after they paint the cars and the customers come and pick them up, they have a dry spot. We get a place down in Plymouth, very similar to what they're trying to do here.
Okay, great. So Deb, you took a look at storm work calculations, but there's no increase to impervious area on this, right?
No, so where the canopy is going is already impervious, so really there's no need to drain, it stays the same.
No change, okay. So this is a, um, this is a minor modification to an existing site plan. We can do it that way. I mean, it's not much to talk about. Yeah, I think it's fine.
Do we need to vote on it?
Yeah, so what I'll, I'll do is accept a motion for a minor modification to site plan number SP 4-08.
So we?
Okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Scott seconded and roll call. Scott?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Uh, Jim? Are you with us, Jim?
Aye, sorry.
Heather?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for going through the process.
Yep.
We appreciate it. All right, next we have an informal meeting with Tyler Doctor on opening a cafe at 158 Center Street in the Center Protection District. Hi.
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 Hi. So I'm here to just, um, talk to you guys a little about a project that we're hoping to, to do. We recently became tenants in the location that was formerly South, South Shore Trains and More. We're looking to open up a cafe. My wife and I currently own a catering company called Flavor Profile. We're based out of Shared Space in Kingston. So what we're looking to do is serve some baked goods, coffee, and some sandwiches, which we'll be preparing at our commissary kitchen and bringing over by delivery each morning. So we're not looking to install a full kitchen or do much construction to the property at all, just some modifications to the interior. I know parking obviously has become a concern from the couple of people that I've spoken to so far. We'd be more than happy to draw up a parking plan if that's something that you guys are willing to explore.
Yeah, that would be, that would definitely be helpful.
Yeah, so we just had some questions of what you guys would exactly be looking for from us, so if you could kind of fill me in.
Uh, well, it's-
Any questions you might have in the field, yeah.
I don't think there's much we need.
Parking was the first thing that came to mind, whether, you know, having people coming in and out, is there parking there? Because I know there's never been much.
Yeah, so we've given a little bit of a look and there can be space for maybe four or five angled spots if we kind of get creative and of course we'll have to take some measurements and see exactly how many we can get in there. There is some other space that would, it would need to be leveled, but there is potentially room for more parking off kind of to the side of the building. I do rent, um, part of the three bay garage where we might be able to work something out with the landlord if I was to rent the whole space. We could potentially use it for parking in front of the bays, but that's just another option. I'm thinking that potentially for the traffic that we're expecting, potentially the four diagonal spaces could be sufficient. And again, we're not looking to do any major construction or anything like that or install a formal kitchen. It would just be more of a counter space. So, yeah, basically, parking, what I know is-
So this is more of a to-go operation than a
Yes.
sit-in and be part of a-
Yeah, we plan on doing quite a bit of to-go. There will be some seating inside, but we don't intend it to be, you know, more like a sit-down restaurant, you know? People come in grabbing a pastry to-go, sandwich to-go, things like that.
Because I think parking would be tied to seating. So if you were to propose X amount of seating, you would look for X amount of parking.
Right, correct, yeah. Understood.
Bear in mind that would be what we'd be looking for.
Okay. Now, is there a formula to how many seats per spot? Is it all different or?
Yeah, there, there is a formula to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it is.
Okay, I was just curious. We can, you know, when we make the formal proposal, we can get to that, yeah, for sure.
Is it in the zoning bylaws?
As an allowed use? It's in the Center Protection District, so yeah, I think it's an allowed use.
So I think there's a requirement for seating in Center Protection for any restaurant.
There could be, yeah. Yep. So take a look at the, at the Center Protection District bylaw.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Whoever you're working with on designing the area
Yeah.
consult that.
Okay.
And then with that in mind, come back to us with a plan.
Great.
And, um, since you're not doing any construction, we don't really require any site plan approval on this. It's just a change of use and sometimes when you go through a change of use, there's certain things that we like to look at because
Okay.
parking, seating are those two issues.
Okay, great. Awesome.
Right.
Signage.
Signage.
Yeah, but that's, you're gonna, well, Center Protection District signage, you're gonna have to come to us.
Yes, yeah, I'm aware of that, yeah. This is my wife, Cory, by the way.
Hi.
Okay. How many other questions?
Nope.
Mr. Chair, I have some questions, so if there's not a site plan? No, no site plan?
Mm-mm.
So no PR engineering, so they, and what about a proper PR?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, so if they just come in with their plans?
And then they're gonna have to go through the building department.
Okay.
All right, so they're gonna have to get, you're gonna have to get an occupancy permit.
Okay.
So that's really the, that's your hurdle is, is that.
Okay.
Any other comment?
Yep.
They are coming out right at the light, so we may want to just consider that.
Yep, absolutely. It's a, it's a, it's a tight spot there.
Yeah, I was actually thinking of the ones down by Bonzi's, I didn't know that's what we're talking about, Center Protection.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting location.
Yeah.
A challenging location.
It is, it is. It's a really great space. We, we kind of fell in love with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Seems like it just has destined to be something on the train store.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay. Has everyone read the minutes?
I'm making sure to fill the minutes from Monday, March 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote for this. Scott?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Great. Is there another motion someone would like to put on the table for us?
Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Stefan?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Thank you very much. Thanks, folks.